Okay, well, welcome to the regular board meeting for the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, November the 5th, 2013. It's also Election Day, so I hope you all get out and vote. I'm sure you all will. In any case, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine. Supervisor Groom.
President.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Horsley.
Here. Now, time for public comment, and I have two slips here for public comment. The first is Martin Fox, followed by Teresa Dwyer.
Good morning, President Horsley, members of the board, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Balpe, Mr. Holland and Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county in pledging your allegiance to our republic, which stands for liberty and justice for all, even those persons living with mental illness who do not believe they are sick and cannot advocate for services that would give them an opportunity to be productive citizens. The Alameda County Board of Supervisors Health Committee voted to recommend the implementation of a Laura's Law pilot project to the full Board of Supervisors during its meeting in Oakland last Monday. They found Laura's Law promotes the recovery of those persons living with mental illness who lack the understanding of their need to seek treatment voluntarily by releasing them from the imprisonment of relapse after relapse that results from the intellectually and morally bankrupt policies and procedures promoted by the same twisted interpretations of the Lander and Peters Short Act used by San Mateo County's Behavioral Health and Recovery Service to justify cruel, inhuman, and wasteful outcomes. Deliberately disregarding the untreated mental illness of persons imprisoned by a lack of understanding of their need to seek treatment voluntarily has discouraged others who would help them and turned them into apathetic bystanders that accept as normal the negative outcomes like the one that forced a mother of a seven-year-old boy and his four-year-old sister to call for help before Daniel Brinkman grabbed another 16-year-old girl in San Carlos on October 3rd, and then he assaulted a nurse and broke the leg of a security guard in San Mateo on October 13th. Promote recovery, not relapse. The seriously mentally ill need treatment before a greater tragedy occurs. Please follow the lead of the Alameda County Board of Supervisors Health Committee and vote to implement Laura's Law. Give those persons living with mental illness who are so sick they cannot seek treatment voluntarily an opportunity to be productive citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Teresa Dwyer.
Teresa Dwyer, 1408 Cresby Drive in Pacifica, California. I'm a 2011/12 grand juror and a Korean veteran, so I support everything this gentleman just said because I have a son that suffers from PTSD. But that's not why I'm here this morning. I'm here this morning because of an ordinance that this county supervisor passed back in, I believe it was 2008, August 12th, ordinance 04430. And I'm just wondering how many times that ordinance has been applied to the employees of this county and that need disciplinary action. And recently, I know that Andrea Tissier had an investigative force regarding some people that were handling conservatorships. And what I would like to request, and I don't know if I'd do it here or in a written way, but I would like to have the adult protective services investigated for their negligence and their scrutiny against me. I'm a witness to an event that I discussed with Andrea Tissier, and unfortunately, it took her a year and a half to get back, or a county council, get back with me with the results of that case. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dwyer.
President Horsley, for the record, it hasn't been Supervisor Tissier's office's responsibility to respond, Ms. Dwyer. My office has been taking the lead in responding to her concerns, and we've been very responsive. And to the extent Ms. Dwyer has any further concerns, she can give me a call personally to talk about them.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. It's now time to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items. I'm going to actually take one item off, item number 15. Are there any other items to remove?
I have some items. I think there's some people I want to speak to, the district lines, number eight.
Number eight?
And I'd like to take off 19 and 28 for a couple of questions and comments.
19 and 28, okay. Okay, do we have a motion to...
Supervisor Horsley, item 15 also?
I think I already said we're taking item number 15 off the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll move to set the agenda and approve the consent item except for the ones that were asked to be pulled.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, time for a presentation and awards. I'm going to take the liberty of moving item number three first, because I understand a young man has to go back to school. It's a presentation of commendation to Patrick Tornas for his Eagle Scout project at the Maple Street Shelter, including landscaping and construction of a flagpole to honor veterans. Supervisor Warren Slocum.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you mentioned in the chambers this morning, we have Patrick Tornas and his parents there in the front row. You can see Patrick in his Eagle Scout uniform.
Yes, we can.
And I would like to make a motion, if I could, that we adopt the commendation to recognize Patrick for his achievements.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
So, for those of you that don't know, being an Eagle Scout represents a whole heck of a lot of time, energy, and work, as maybe Patrick will comment on later. But he's being honored here today for his project at the Maple Street Shelter's Serenity Garden. And actually, last night, I was so curious about this that I drove over to the shelter and took that picture of the benches in the garden area and the little meditation fountain there. Couldn't get a picture of the flagpole, but there is a flagpole there with a plaque on it that honors veterans. Unfortunately, that picture just didn't come out. But so, Patrick's work was involved some 24 scouts, 10 adults, and there were some 245 hours that were spent working on this project, which you can see really made the area more beautiful. As I mentioned, it involved fundraising, it involved putting that Serenity Park together. Now, a little bit about Patrick. He's a 16-year-old junior, I believe, at Woodside Priory. His favorite subjects include math, science, and computer science. And President Horsley, he plays the saxophone for his school's wind symphony.
All right.
Runs track and field and is a member of the National Honor Society. He's been a member of Troop 206 since 2008, earning 31 merit badges, having spent 119 nights of camping, 406 miles of backpacking, and 147 hours of community service. And Patrick is joined, as I mentioned, by his parents. They're the ones filming right now.[533.79][533.79](Laughter). And I would like us all gathered here to thank Patrick for the project and thank everybody that worked on this project. Patrick, congratulations.[546.29][546.29](Applause). If the parents want to come up or... I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for bestowing this honor upon me, and I am very proud to receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.[616.54][616.54](Applause).
Now, it's okay if you all want to get back to school now.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, great. Can you go back up to item number one? It's a presentation of a resolution honoring the Aragon Outlook for taking first place in the General Excellence category of the San Francisco Peninsula Press Club's 2013 High School Journalism Award. Supervisor Carol Groom.
Thanks, Mr. President. It's really my great honor today to ask you to adopt a resolution honoring the Aragon Outlook for their superlative journalism and recognition by the San Francisco Peninsula Press Club. It set the record for the most awards received by one newspaper at the San Francisco Press Club's High School Journalism Awards. They won 13. They won the Best in Show for Newspaper Broadsheet of 17 or more pages from the National Scholastic Press Association at the National Journalism Convention held in San Francisco. The Aragon Outlook is published once a month, provides great reports and engaging opinion pieces on people, issues, events in the Aragon High School and the surrounding community. The newspaper offers a wide variety of perspectives covering an extensive range of topics, including sports, new school policies, fashion, and health among just several. So today, I'd like to introduce you all to the co-editors-in-chief, Annika Ulrich and Brandon Liu. They were both feature editors during the 12-13 school year, core parts of the team that received multiple distinctions, Scott Stilton, who is the faculty advisor for the Aragon Outlook, and Principal Pat Kurtz. So I would make a motion to accept this.
I'd like to second it. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.[737.51][737.51](Applause).
I'm Brandon Liu, and I'm a senior at Aragon High School as well.
And we are the co-editors-in-chief of the Aragon Outlook. On behalf of the Aragon Outlook's editing team and staff, thank you for recognizing our newspaper. As a group, we work very hard to help grow strong writers, photographers, and artists who together offer a unique perspective to our community. In that sense, the Outlook is a unique perspective in itself. While it seeks to provide a journalistic experience for those involved, it also serves an educational purpose. Working on the Outlook is an opportunity to apply core curricular skills, writing, reading, communicating, researching, in an adaptive environment.
High school journalism is unique in the sense that it demands so much collaboration and yet offers a paradigm for individual growth. And we're certain that the 40 or so individuals that worked on the Outlook last year would agree that it's a model that rewards strong work ethic. We're also very fortunate that Aragon and this county are led by adults who are willing to put this kind of trust in the hands of high school students. So we'd like to thank you again for your recognition of the Outlook. Today's focus on national media is another facet of information oversaturation, so we really appreciate the attention paid to the local investigative stories and the human interest stories that make up this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.[866.41][866.41](Applause). You can also go back to class if you want.[876.81][876.81](Laughter).
Their former key shirt.[880.12][880.12](Laughter).
This next is a presentation of commendations to first responders and San Mateo County employees who were instrumental in the emergency response of the six-alarm fire at the Hallmark House Apartments in Redwood City on Sunday, July 7, 2013. Supervisor Warren Slocum.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the wee hours of the morning on May 15th, an apartment building across the street from the Fair Oaks Elementary School went up in flames, displacing 26 residents and 24 residents of a neighboring building, 50 people in all. About half of those were children. The Fair Oaks Elementary School became the Emergency Response Center. A community of disaster responders that we honor today provided an amazing and immediate response to those families. And then it happened again. This time, it was just before 2:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 7th, when a six-alarm fire ripped through the Hallmark House Apartment Building on Woodside Road. More than 100 firefighters with 27 trucks responded. Firefighters climbed ladders, entered burning apartments, rescued trapped residents, and helped 16 injured get to local hospitals. They also rescued a dozen people from the balconies. There was a fatality in the unit where the fire started. It was a well-coordinated fire response under the leadership of the Redwood City Police Chief Jim Skinner and Fire Marshal Jim Palassi. To put the difficulty of fighting this fire in perspective, the city of Foster City recently awarded three medals of valor to the San Mateo Foster City Belmont firefighters for their heroism in rescuing the particularly frail residents of this fire. Captain Chuck Goodwin and firefighters Craig Whitney and Diane Bull received medals of valor, the first ones awarded in over 23 years, and they're with us here today in the audience.[1007.51][1007.51](Applause). The disaster response team that we honor today set up a shelter, provided clothing, counseling, medicine, food, transportation, and other services to the 97 homeless victims while the firefighters put out the blaze, which burned for some 15 hours. Community businesses generously donated to the effort, too. Everyone said yes, including Starbucks, Safeway, Kmart, Target, to name just a few. Our nonprofit partners filled the missing gaps in things like shoes for the kids from My New Red Shoes, food from the Second Harvest, and donations of money and household goods from the San Mateo County Realtors Association, and many others. The majority of the residents of the Hallmark House residents were disabled, elderly, and medically fragile. The process of rebuilding lives is a complicated one, especially when you lose everything. I asked for help in finding places for people to live, and several of the organizations being honored today provided affordable housing for these fire victims, especially the Equity Woodland Apartments in East Palo Alto. They provided more than 20 affordable units to the victims. And then, Mr. President, the unthinkable happened again, this time just blocks away. On October 17th, a six-alarm fire at the terrorist apartments on Woodside Road just down the street displaced another 75 people. There were four injuries and thankfully, no fatalities. The same team of emergency responders, nonprofits, businesses, community organizations, and individuals once again stepped up to lend a hand. There were individual acts of heroism that occurred and angels who helped out. Although not everyone is able to be here today, we should all feel blessed to live in a community that cares so much. I would especially like to thank Beverly Beasley Johnson of our Human Services Agency and Terry Chin of the Fair Oaks Community Center in Redwood City because, having been down there with them during these emergencies, they truly did move mountains, and that's appreciated. So words cannot express how deeply appreciative we are. My colleagues and I know that you all worked around the clock in the most difficult of circumstances and were generous beyond measure. So we thank you, we honor you, we commend your actions and your service. And, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to adopt the commendation recognizing our disaster responders and our heroes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. So, the way we're going to do this, taking Supervisor Tissier's lead from a couple of months ago, is we're going to, I'm going to go down to the podium down there, and I'm going to call out the organization name, and if the representative here can come up and receive the commendation. And following that, perhaps, all of my colleagues could join us down here for a group picture. And then, once we do that, I'd like to just read off the names of the organizations of people from organizations that couldn't join us today but need to be recognized nonetheless, if that's okay with everybody.
Yes, good.
So with that, let us begin. And the first one, to give you a head start, is American Medical Response.[1233.15][1233.15](Applause). American Red Cross, San Mateo County. Are they here this morning? There we go.[1332.01][1332.01](Applause). Envision Shelter Network.[1341.01][1341.01](Applause). Kaiser Permanente. I saw Matt earlier, there he is.[1350.01][1350.01](Applause). Thank you, Matt. Hi.
Envision Shelter Network.
Ah, okay. There's Envision Shelter Network. Thank you very much. Thank you.[1358.01][1358.01](Applause). Lions Club of the Silicon Valley. Are they here?[1362.83][1362.83](Applause). And the Menlo Park Fire District. Chief Dan. Mental Health Association of San Mateo County. My New Red Shoes. Salvation Army. San Mateo City Fire Department. San Mateo County Association of Realtors. San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Just a few more, everybody. San Mateo County Health System. San Mateo County Fire, CAL FIRE. San Mateo County Human Services Agency. I'm telling you, you're all going to have to squeeze in here in a minute, so you might as well start. San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Patrol Division. Veterans Memorial Senior Center in Redwood City. Woodside Fire Department. If all the first responders that I didn't mention could come up and get in this group picture, please, it would be greatly appreciated. Anybody that I've missed? Yeah, of course.[1607.26][1607.26](Laughter). So let me just read this list of other organizations, and perhaps, some of you may be here. Now, you're going to have to, you guys down here are going to have to squeeze in over here. California National Guard Armory. Caminar. Central County Fire Department. Woodland Park Apartments. Kmart. Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. The Mateo Lounge. Medical Care Professionals Equipment. Messiah Lutheran Church. Peninsula Humane Society. Project Access. Pyramid Alternatives. Redwood City Fire Department. Redwood City Police Department. Redwood City Public Works. The Safeway on Woodside Road. The Safeway Pharmacy. San Mateo County Emergency Medical Services. San Mateo County Health, Aging, and Adult Services. Office of Emergency Services. San Mateo County Public Safety Communications Dispatch. San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. San Mateo County Vocational Rehabilitation Services. South San Francisco Fire Department. Starbucks at Sequoia Station. Nice, we forget Starbucks. The St. Francis Center, North Fair Oaks. Su Chi. USA Walking on Water. The Veterans Administration of Palo Alto. And Walgreens Drugstore in San Carlos. Thank you all so very much on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. As you can clearly see, it took a lot of people, and there are a lot of people who couldn't be here today, that were involved in these disasters and helping the victims. So, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and President Horsley, thank you all so very much. You served us well.[1728.91][1728.91](Applause). Now, I don't know how we're going to do this, but maybe we can all attest out, for those of you that have a new iPhone with the panorama view.[1740.12][1740.12](Laughter). You have one, okay. So, if the board members could join us down here? You want to get in the picture?
Hey, why don't you get in the picture? Get in the picture. Go Asia.
Thank you, everybody. Now, if there's a spokesman for the group, you're welcome to come here and say a few,
Chief Jim Skinner, would you come to the podium?
Yes, I'd like to. San Mateo Fire Chiefs Association, I'm Jim Skinner, Redwood City's Fire Chief, not, not Police Chief, but thank you. I'd like to thank you for this acknowledgement, and it was truly a team effort. And unfortunately, we had these events so close together, but we're learning a lot of lessons. So, if the, this tragedy does happen again, we'll be much, much better to help in the aftermath, to help the victims recover from, from the event. So, on behalf of the first responders, I'd like to thank you for your, your acknowledgement.
Well, thank you, and thank all the first responders. Did a magnificent job. So, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Next is number four, is the presentation by Code for America Supervisor Adrienne Tessier.
Thank you, Mr. President. In February of this year, I was proud to present to the Board of Supervisors a group of men and women participating in the Code for America program. Code for America brings together bright minds to use technology to help government work for everyone. In other words, they wanted to help San Mateo connect with residents who depend on county resources and connect with them at their level through smartphone applications and a website that is organized and easily searchable. I first heard about Code for America through Bill Somerville from Philanthropic Ventures Foundation. In the months that followed my introduction in February, Code for America, in partnership with the Human Services Agency, worked with community-based organizations in San Mateo County and came up with smcconnect.org, an outstanding resource for our residents. Today, we have with us Beverly Beasley Johnson, our Director of Human Services Agency, and one of the 2013 Code for America Fellows, Monsef. I, I'm really gonna ruin your name. Why don't you say, there you go. Before I, well, they're already here. So, before I bring them up, I want to say what a wonderful resource they have created for San Mateo County residents. Yesterday, at the Seniors on the Move Conference, we had a presentation by one of our CBOs, the Second Harvest Food Bank. Now, yesterday's crowd of seniors probably wouldn't be the target audience for the app, but the Second Harvest Food Bank said they serve 40,000 people a month through various programs and that there are hundreds and possibly thousands of other residents in this county who could qualify for food assistance. This is just one example of how they can help. There is no question that smcconnect.org and its app will make a difference in the life of our neediest residents. There are many people who worked hard behind the scenes to make this collaboration a possibility. And I want to thank James Heigah, the Executive Director for Philanthropic Ventures Foundation, for their financial contribution and advisory oversight; for John Malby, for coordinating the county's financial contribution to the program; Bob Softman, the interim Co-Executive Director, Code for America and his partnership and guidance; Beverly Beasley Johnson and her crew at HSA for their coordination and mentorship; and finally, our Code for America Fellows for their commitment to public service and making government work for everyone. With that, Beverly, I'd like to introduce you and our young fellow there.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Malby, Mr. Byers, and Mr. Holland. I'm here joined with our Code for America Fellows. Monsef and Anz are here. Sophia, I don't think has joined us today, but she makes-
She's looking for parking.
Okay. She rounded out our team of three Code for America Fellows that have been assigned in residence, working with the Human Services Agency and our many CBO partners for this past year. There was a time in my life when I actually experienced food insecurity, and it actually sort of shaped my commitment and, and interest in providing access to resources for the rest of my life. And it made the issue of access really critical to me, and I know I'm joined by my colleagues in the Human Services Agency when we say that access really can make the difference. In 2006, when I was appointed Director here in San Mateo County, I soon discovered that we were home to one of the most expensive zip codes in the country. But I also discovered that there was another reality, that we also were home to many who were struggling to make ends meet. People who were renting garages because of the high cost of housing. People who were food insecure and who needed access to services that we could provide through our agency. The cost of living in San Mateo County for a family of three is $87,000 a year. A mom with two children and a job paying $20 an hour, working 40 hours a week, only earns $41,000 per year. Eligibility for the Food Stamp or CalFresh benefit really tops out for that family at $25,000 a year. This mom and another 150,000 residents live in the gap here in San Mateo County, and they desperately need to know where they can receive help, where they can access services, and where they can get support to make ends meet for their family.
Now, this is Jackie. She's living in that gap. She's a single working mom who was struggling to get by until she heard about the nonprofit Equum Medical Hunger Program, who helped her save money to buy a car and eventually start a small business. Now, this is a clear case of information helping someone succeed. But the problem is Jackie only found out about the nonprofit through word of mouth. Now, there are many organizations like Equum Medical Hunger Program that are available to help people like Jackie. But if she doesn't know about them, then they might as well not exist, right? So, how do we make this information more easily accessible beyond word of mouth?
For the last 30 years, the Human Services Agency has been in partnership with the Peninsula Library System, who's maintained a database called the Community Information Program or the CIP Database. While this has been a valuable resource for our residents and providers in our county, and it's also the number-one requested brochure at our booth at the county fair each year, one of the things that we were really clear about is that it's only updated once a year, and so some information can become obsolete the day it's printed. It's only printed in two languages, and we know that we live in a very, very diverse county. And we've heard time and time again that people really access information in different ways today. They use their online devices, they use their smartphones, they use tablets, and they wanted to be able to access information using the technology that was at hand.
So, our approach was to build a platform that allows a diverse group of people, government, nonprofits, and community members, to collaborate and participate in solving the problem. Now, the name of our platform is Ohana, which in Hawaiian means "family" in the extended sense of the term. And what Ohana does is it takes this data, this list of organizations in the county, from a closed state with only one entity capable of making updates, but without the time and the resources to keep everything up to date, to this open and accessible state where organizations can access their own data and make updates whenever things change. And it allows developers to build impactful applications on top of this data. Now, as an example of what can be created using this open data, we built smcconnect.org, which is a simple but rich website that makes it easy to look up all kinds of services in San Mateo County with a special focus on human services. It supports multiple languages. It displays results on a map. And it automatically works on mobile devices so that police officers and social workers who are out in the field can quickly refer people to the help they need. Now, the website is open now, it's available, so we encourage you to visit it and give us feedback. There's a feedback button on the top right. Now, the next step was to update and improve the data in order to provide more relevant search results. We had to tag the organizations with the right keywords and phrases, but with 1,700 entries to edit, we needed help. And who better to help us than our partners at the Human Services Agency and all the community-based organizations, like the, many of the ones that were honored today, to help us make these updates? And so, we organized two events where the community came together and updated 1,200 of those entries. And because SMC Connect pulls in data from the Ohana platform, as the community was making updates, search results were improving in real time on SMC Connect. Now, that's pretty powerful. And now, for the, for the first time in 30 years, organizations can access their own data and make changes in real time.
The process to getting where we are today required what we called an uncommon collaboration. We use creative technology as a piece of the solution, and that solution will now connect residents to free or reduced-cost food or other services that they may need. When we heard about the relationships being facilitated by Code for America, it resonated as a way to bring fresh eyes to an old problem. We realized that we needed to lead the way by opening our data and our processes to new ways of outreach and engagement. We know that government cannot and does not do this work alone, and that we rely on our community, community's extensive safety net to help our residents make ends meet. Over the course of the past year, the fellows participated in many activities, and we learned from each other. Together, we participated in the Food Stamp Challenge and lived on a food budget of $37.25 for seven days. We hosted a hackathon at Stanford University called Hack Hunger. The fellows and the HSA leadership team volunteered to serve food at the Equum Medical Hunger Program in East Palo Alto. And the fellows hosted a shared skill session with HSA staff to learn about development and application software.
Now, SMC Connect is just one example of the powerful applications that can be built using the Ohana platform. And news of our project traveled all the way to DC, where someone read about it in a blog post, and overnight, in a few hours on a Friday night, he built a working prototype of a text-messaging-based search interface to allow residents who don't have access to a web browser or a smartphone to be able to find the services they need. Now, with the Ohana platform, it has never been easier to keep your community's information up to date, to build valuable applications that serve underprivileged residents, and to honor the work of nonprofits by referring those residents to them. And with, with San Mateo County leading the way, we hope other cities can take advantage of this platform so that people like Jackie can get the help they need and live a better life. Now, from the beginning, we knew the value of opening this data. And this year, we discovered a new way to make the safety net in San Mateo County smart. And after a lot of great work, the technology is finally ready, but now it's up to the leaders in the county and across all 21 cities to help make sure that SMC Connect is a sustainable piece of civic infrastructure. And so, we just need your help to spread the word about the website to the people who need it most.
We conclude with just a list of thank yous to our San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, to the County Manager's Office for their support in our project with Code for America, certainly to the Philanthropic Ventures Foundation, James Heigah and Bill Somerville, who actually supported our efforts with financial contributions to the effort, and to the Code for America team, and to our three fellows, who we've come to see as extended county family because of the years that they've spent working on helping us to solve for our residents issues of access. We thank you, and we thank them.
Thank you, thank you, Beverly. I also want to say thank you to Ansel, Monsef, and Sophia, as our sneak in the back door there. Thank you so much. You guys did a fantastic job. This is gonna be a great tool for us here in San Mateo County and a great tool for those in great need. So, thank you. And Beverly, thank you for your leadership and with your staff as well. Great job.
Thanks, thanks. It's, it is good work, yeah. Mr. President, if I, if I could just add to that, I think this is a good example and working prototype, if you will, of the agile organization and what can be accomplished by bringing people into the organization for a short period of time and really helping to change in many ways how the organization functions. And so, I want to thank Beverly for really being the champion of this, and, and Adrienne and other members of the board for being so supportive.
It was really a great application. Actually, it was a coverage on this program in the Chronicle, though, so it's fascinating and a great application.
I could add a comment, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the, you know, it was mentioned that, you know, other counties, you know, may benefit from, from these tools. So, you know, the extent we, you know, right, people can, you know, get, get something into one of the, you know, one of the trade magazines or, you know, try to get the word out, I think people will, would be eager to take, take it, license it from us.
Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you. Item number five will be at 1:30. It's a presentation of our Service Awards. I'll take item number six later, and we'll go now to item number eight, which is the adoption of an ordinance amending sections, I won't read all the sections, of Chapter 2.02, Title II, the San Mateo County Ordinance Code establishing the boundaries of the supervisorial districts. It was previously introduced on October 22nd, 2013, and et cetera, et cetera. So, Supervisor Pine, you asked it to be taken off of consent?
I, I did so because I believe there's a few folks who want to provide some, some comments to us.
I see Mr. Rubin here. And Carolyn Sue, did you want to speak?
... opportunity.
Here come the slips.
Oh, if you want to do it in a different order, Joanna Cuevas Ingram and Carolyn Sue, whoever you want to do it. Carolyn, you're gonna be, or Joanne, you're gonna be first. And then Carolyn, you'll be next, and then followed by Mr. Rubin.
Good morning, Chair Horsley and Board of Supervisors, President Horsley. We would like to commend the board for initiating and going through this process. You know, we do believe it was the first of its kind in the sense that the board and the committee, the advisory committee, that helped to review the lines that were drawn went to great lengths to foster public participation with the hiring of a professional demographer to help draft district lines, an outreach consultant to encourage civic participation, a videographer and a court reporter to ensure transparency, and interpreters to translate for non-English-speaking residents. The line drawing process coordinated by the committee was a model of civic engagement. And as a result of these efforts to encourage a truly community-driven process, the residents of San Mateo, many for the first time, came out en masse to testify about their dynamic histories, the vibrancy of their unique communities, and the many policy concerns their neighborhoods share. And based on this process, the committee made specific recommendations that best protected the county's many diverse communities. And the board's decision, while we recognize and commend the board's decision to acknowledge the diversity of those communities in Districts Four and Five, we remain concerned and disappointed about the board's decision not to support the recommendations of the committee in their entirety, and it sets a troubling precedent for the county. The committee was established as a result of our lawsuit, the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights, Asian Law Caucus, and the Law Office of Robert Rubin, with support from Arnold and Porter, challenging the previous at-large election system as discriminatory towards Latinos and Asians, who together make up a majority of the county's residents here in San Mateo. As part of the settlement agreement, our plaintiffs demanded that a community-based process ensue. And we remain concerned when board members may place their own political interests before the, the needs and the concerns of the community.
For the speakers, you don't really need to bend into the microphone. It actually, it picks it up, in fact, it distorts it if you speak directly into the microphones. So, Carolyn Sue?
Thank you, Carolyn Sue from the Asian Law Caucus. I want to reiterate what Joanna said and commend this board for creating a process that was community-driven, that brought out a number of people who wouldn't have come and spoken out before this, who hadn't ever participated on the county level. And I think that was very important for them to be a part of this process. Again, we are disappointed that you, this board did not defer completely to the committee as we believed that it should have. I think that, that would have been a, shown a good faith, it would have shown to the community that there was a good-fait effort by this board to create a process that was fair as well as true. fair as well as truly community-driven. And so, with that, we urge this board to look forward and to make improvements on this process in the future and hopefully move towards an independent committee, as this county will be going through a redistricting process every 10 years from now on. And the other thing I think is important is also...
It's done every 10 years.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And I think that the other thing that is important is to be able to continue, is to set up a process or some sort of mechanism in which we can continue to foster the civic participation, especially among the different, especially disadvantaged communities that typically don't participate on, again, on the county level, and that includes providing language assistance and encouraging them to come out into these meetings, doing community outreach and education around these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sue. Robert Rubin next, followed by Chris Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It's been a long time coming. I think this is probably our last official meeting that started with a lawsuit, probably started before the lawsuit. But I guess what I'd like to say is, first of all, thank you to the board and to any members of the advisory committee who may be here. I think they did some very serious work and very impressive work. And to Mr. Byers and his staff, I think their transparency has certainly been a model throughout this effort. San Mateo County, as you well know, is an incredibly diverse place. Despite that, until last year, it was the only county in the state that did not have district elections, which, as you know, promotes diversity and promotes minority voting power. Indeed, it was not until one of your own, Mr. Pine, approached me and said, "The only way we're going to get district elections is if you sue." And so, we did.
I take exception with that comment. I did not make that comment to you.
Well, you did come to my office and tell me that there was a problem with the system and that we didn't, it wasn't going to change until there was a lawsuit.
Again, I take exception to your characterizing my comments as ever encouraging a lawsuit. I never felt that the lawsuit was appropriate. I always thought that the assertion of the California Voting Right Act was misguided. I don't think there's any issues of racial prejudice or problems with minority representation in the district system that we now have. And for the record, I want to be clear that I not, didn't think this litigation was productive. I'm glad that it went to the voters. I thought it was always, should have been in the hands of the voters. As a member of the Charter Commission, I recommended that it went to go to the voters. This was a decision for the voters. The lawsuit was unfortunate, and so, I want to be clear on my participation in this.
Can I give Mr. Rubin an additional one minute? Most of his time was taken up with exchange.
Thank you. I didn't expect to have this kind of debate, but since we're making records, I would ask Mr. Pine to explain why he did come to my office and talk to me about the situation. He knows what I do.
Well...
I sue jurisdictions for at-large elections, and I'm not quite sure what the purpose of his denying that now is. But as I say, I don't want to get into a debate about that. I'd hope to end on a more constructive note, which was that I would hope that the next time around, that there wouldn't be a lawsuit to require the kind of changes that we're seeing today, which are a mixed bag, partially good. I think some of the recommendations, particularly around District One, were ignored, and that's unfortunate. But I would urge you to do two things. One, join us in supporting a redistricting committee in 2020 that actually makes final recommendations, final decisions on district lines, so that we remove any hint of self-interest, which is admittedly difficult to avoid. And lastly, I would just ask President Horstley and members of the board to perhaps explain why. I think a lot of members of the community were left wondering why, given the overwhelming support for one plan, you chose another. Certainly, you're prerogative to do that, but I think that, given the overwhelming support for the one plan, that it would be, it would behoove the committee, and it would certainly, I think, empower the community to explain why you did that. You obviously feel that you have good reasons, so I think it would be, it would just be respectful of the community's efforts in this regard to tell them, "We understand you spent a lot of time working on this. You came up with one plan. We decided on another. This is why." And give the due respect to the committee that really did perform as Supervisor Tissier and Mr. Slougham know, was really yeoman's work. So, I'd urge you to do...
Thanks, Mr. Rubin. The final speaker on this is Chris Bowman.
Thank you, President Horstley and members. I did another all-nighter and sent you an email at 5:00 in the morning, and I hope that you got the packets, but I have copies of my 18-page memorandum to you. Basically, it goes over my analysis of the plan that you did approve, talked about the achievements that you did with the plan of basically uniting Redwood City, putting 71.9% of South San Francisco into District One, doing a limited split in San Bruno, but also some of the problems, such as the major split in Menlo Park, which is a 41, 59% split on El Camino, which will diminish their power in either district for the next seven years. I also have made some recommendations on the process, seven of them. I think it's important that in future redistricting efforts, whether it be an advisory committee, independent panel, your board itself, that you allow the presenters of plans, 15 minutes, to be able to organize their time as they see fit. We have presence for that at the Citizens Advisory Committee at the state level in San Francisco with their independent commission or task force. And it's very difficult in a two-minute period for anyone to discuss anything meaningfully or to create a, you know, continuity of thought on the proposal. So, I think that that would be a major step forward. The other thing is that, you know, you should have hearings all the way through. You know, there were major breaks during the summer when there were no hearings, and that meant at the very end, there was no time to be able to do extensive deliberations, and there should have been more extensive deliberations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Thanks also for all your contributions on the different maps as well. So, I got to, for my colleagues, do you want to have a comment, Supervisor Slougham?
Excuse me. Thank you. Just let me add one thing, Mr. President, and my colleagues to consider, and Mr. Malpe. It seems like when you go through these numbers on all the data that we received through these many months, that one of the things that's clear to me is that we need to spend some time and energy on voter outreach in these underserved areas, especially perhaps District Four, District One, and the other districts also, but to foster that idea of civic participation that Mr. Rubin mentioned. And, you know, when I was registrar, we actually held house parties, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, teaching people how easy it was to register to vote, and then teaching them actually how to cast their ballot, whether it was by mail or at a polling place, because nobody wants to go into a polling place and look, you know, foolish. So, we actually did that. So, I think the next part of all this effort, frankly, is to perhaps ask the registrar of voters and maybe the county manager's office to put together some kind of an outreach plan where we could begin to chip away at those participation rates in the districts.
Through the President, I think we can bring back that plan to you, Mr. Slougham. And, you know, and obviously, it's, I think, with the new district boundaries and the first election in which supervisors will be elected in a district system, it's particularly timely and important.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Supervisor Tissier? I'll just make a couple of quick comments. First off, you know, I realize, as I said at the beginning of the last meeting, when we took action, that we weren't going to make everybody happy. There are lots of communities of interest. The reason we did what we did, and I think we all gave our reasons at the time, was we had to listen to all of them. And you may agree to disagree which districts you thought we did well and which districts people thought we didn't do well. But the other part, you know, every time we turned around, the maps kept changing. And as we looked at them, I think we listened to everybody. There were a lot of people that made comment that didn't necessarily come to the meetings but sent emails, and we documented all that. Our job was to take all of that in, and I believe at the end of the day, we took all of it in, and we determined what we thought was in the best interest of the entire community. Now, again, people may agree to disagree, and someone's not going to be happy, and that's clearly the case. But I do think we had a good process. We spent a lot of time, a lot of time, and I think we had 10, 12 meetings, a lot of public participation, probably more than I've seen in a long time on any subject matter. So, I do believe the process, although some may not agree with it, I think it was a very good, thorough process, and I think we got a lot of participation. And I think at the end of the day, I think this board made the decision that they thought was in the best interest of the entire county. Now, I agree there are things, as we look forward, this is the first time we've done it, so in, you know, another 10 years, there may be other processes that that board wants to take a look at, and I think there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, we chose to look at the districts. We didn't have to. We actually, this board decided to look at districts and let people give their input. We could have just left it alone and not even bothered, but we didn't think that was the right thing to do either. So, I do think it was a good process. It was certainly a learning experience for a lot of us that had not done this before. So, you know, with that, Mr. President, I am going to make a motion to approve item number eight.
I'll second that motion, but before I do that, I'm going to have Supervisor Groom want to speak.
Thank you. Thanks. I just want to say a comment or two. Supervisor Horstley and I were designated by this board to work with the Committee for Civil Rights and the Asian Law Caucus in trying to negotiate how we would approach district elections. And I believe those were closed-session mediation, so I'm not at liberty to discuss, but I would like to say that we did have extensive conversations about voter outreach and voter registration activity. And I, Mr. Rubin, I want to also say that we spent many, many hours with you and your committee in good faith, and I thought that the conversations that we had during that time were productive and valuable. I think Supervisor Horstley and I learned new things, and I hope that you and your colleagues learned new things. But your comments today about Supervisor Pine, I think, were simply uncalled for in the spirit of which we did those negotiations and in the spirit in which this county has accepted district elections and did extensive work to make sure that our first time out was as fair and reasonable as we felt the community asked for and wanted. Thank you, Mr. President.
Supervisor Pine, did you want to make a comment?
I made very extensive comments at the last meeting about the importance of district elections, about the fact that there's never been any data presented to suggest that minority groups are voting in different patterns than other voters in this county. I also expressed my deep concern that the Republican advocates and the plaintiff advocates, who were the dominant forces in the district advisory process, converged on a map, which I thought was attempting to put wealthier and Caucasian people in certain districts and less wealthy and people of color in different districts. And I also spoke about the importance of diversity on this board and how that will not be achieved by drawing these maps, but there are other things that need to be done. And in particular, the voting population does not represent the population of the county. And, yeah, it is a shame that all this money was spent on litigation when, you know, perhaps it could have been used to go out and register voters. So, I'm very comfortable with where we've come out. I thank my colleagues for all their work on it, both on the district elections. That was a really tough issue for all of us. It's one where people have, you know, have concerns, and we're going to see how it works. I remain confident we'll be successful. And then embarked, the team embarked on this very deliberate process of looking at these maps. So, I think this board did a superb job, and I will be, of course, supporting the motion.
Before we go, I just make a quick comment myself. I have to say that the map that the board adopted is, I think, a map that truly reflects public comment that we had, not only the comment from the advisory committee, but also from the public. It takes components of the Equity Map in the North, and it adopts the Community Unity Map in the South, and it also keeps most cities together, which I think is another important factor. I know it is, because I certainly got a number of phone calls from city leaders who really urged us to make sure that their city stayed intact, and unfortunately, we weren't able to in all cases. But I think the compromise that we came up with is actually, I think, a good one, and I have to say that I'm truly proud of the decision that we've come to. So, with that, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And again, thanks for all your comments and for coming again once again to this board meeting. Go on to item number 19 now. If I can get back up on my screen here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
19 involves our construction contract, of course, with, how do you pronounce that? St. Leighton? And I just had a couple of questions, if I might take a minute.
Certainly.
So, the, what this contract does, of course, is it sets the hard cost at about $126 million. And we're trying to, you know, the objective, of course, is to keep the project under $165 million. So, I thought it'd be helpful to just get an update on how the soft costs are coming in to date, and just so we get a sense for where we are vis-à-vis that $165.
Sure. President Horstley, honorable members of the board, I've asked our project manager, Sam Lynn, to be here today, and Sam's going to answer all the questions about the contract. Sam?
Good morning, President.
Good morning.
Supervisors. My name is Sam Lynn. I would like to answer Supervisor Pine's question. The soft cost is primarily allocated for the architects, the engineers, the consultants such as West Environmental, where we have a contaminated soil condition at site, and Geotag, because we're situated in a BAME zone. So, those are the soft costs to retain the professionals to help to design and make this overall jail project functional and solid. And right now, we're estimate roughly $13 million in total that's associated with the soft cost. We're probably approaching $11 million at this point. But in terms of the design progress, we're almost at 80% to 90% progress. So, we think we would be very confident to manage those allocated soft costs.
So, did I hear you say you think the soft costs will only total $11 million?
So far, it's, I want to say it's approximately $11 to $12 million, but we forecast $13 million range.
Okay. And when we actually put in the equipment in the facility...
Yes.
That's part of the hard cost, right?
No, no. The, that's, line item is industry-defined as F, F, and E, fixture, furnitures, and equipment. We allocated roughly $10 million for this project as part of the $165 million. That's for the future workstations, all of the furnitures in the jail settings and office in the...
Okay. So, that's, so that's not part of the $126?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Mr. President, I was just going to, there's an earlier question Mr. Pine asked. I just want to make sure we got it answered for the record, and that is the overall project budget of $165 million, which includes a $10 million contingency. We still anticipate being within that target number. The contingency is roughly still $10 million, so that money is unspent at this point.
Okay, great. The memo notes that this hard cost cap would only go up if there's some unforeseen circumstance. And what would be an example of an unforeseen circumstance?
Sure. Unforeseen would be instances like when we... Unforeseen would be instances like when we excavate the overall site, because we're only at maybe 50% of the coverage in terms of excavation so far. If we continue to excavate and we discover there's some Indian barriers, and those are supposed to be covered by the unforeseen condition or the owner's allowance, or maybe we were very careful about the site soil condition to make sure, you know, all the contamination in the field is being carefully screened and being sent to the dump site to its classification. And God forbid, if there's any more, you know, contaminated soil, then we have to process those, and those would not be under the contractor's guarantee maximum price. They will be coming out of the owner's contingency.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to move the contract forward. I wanted to thank the team for the good work they've done so far, and, you know, in particular, the environmental remediation has been fantastic. So I'm really pleased that we're going to have an environment there where everyone can go to work every day and feel 100% confident that they're working in a safe environment. So I'm, we'll move the contract forward.
Second.
Before I take a vote, I just want to point out, I am so glad to see Lieutenant Debbie Bizon in the audience.
Oh, of course. Thank you for.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And thank you Sheriff Monks and Sam Lynn as well, and as well as the Assistant Sheriff, Trish Sanchez, and all the team. Item number 28. Again, Mr. Pine.
Yeah, is there 15?
No, we took, 15 was removed. We've just taken off, off the agenda.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure if I did the right item. I basically just wanted to ask a question of the county manager about where the pilot positions are, you know, embodied, you know, what, are they in this addendum, addendum that we're approving today? And if you could just kind of summarize where that came out in the end.
Yes, through the President to Mr. Pine, I'd ask our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Valencourt, if she could address that question for you.
Sure. Good morning, President Horsley, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Byers. So included in the memorandum of understanding with extra help with AFSP and SEIU is the agreement to test and evaluate the new term employee model, which is part of our Agile Organization Initiative. We currently have, there's six actually, that are on board already, term employees, four in HR, and two in, have been, offers have been made, I understand, in, for capital projects. And again, the plan would be with this agreement to expand the number of term employees to over 100 in the next year, so we can fully evaluate and test the efficacy of this work delivery model. So currently, the pilots for term employees are HR, ISD, which is the Workday Project, and also, I say cap projects, and potentially HSA in the benefits area.
And once again, that total authorized number for the next, over this two-year period?
For AFSP and SEIU represented classifications, it's 73 positions. It will be much greater than that, or could be considerably greater than that.
Of course, okay.
For other.
Okay. All right.
And through the President to Supervisor Pine, although much of the attention and discussion over the last few months has been on term employees, the concept of agile organization is much broader than that. As we discussed this morning with Code for America, it involves the use of contractors in certain instances. As we've recently seen with the release of a new application for children's support services in which the clients of that particular service can access a great deal of their information and interact with the department via a new application electronically, there are self-help components to this. So it's much broader. I appreciate the concern of everybody involved that term employees are a new concept, but I didn't want us to lose sight of the fact that agile really is a very broad concept.
Okay, thank you. Also, I just wanted to make a brief comment. I wanted to thank our employees for deferring, you know, any changes, any raises for a five-year period. It's been a long, difficult time since the Great Recession started, and our employees really pitched in to help us get through it by not taking those increases. And so, you know, we received some communications from the public warning about, well, why are people getting raises? Well, you know, I think it's really clear why people are getting raises, and that's because they've done a great job, and it's been a long five years without any recognition of that through increases in salaries. So very supportive of this and happy to move it forward.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And we'll now go up to item number six, Board Members' Reports. Supervisor Groom, do you have a report?
Thanks, President Horsley. I would like to ask us to adjourn in memory today of Mary Lou Maudsley. She is the wife of late renowned physician Dean Maudsley. Mrs. Maudsley was renowned in her own way, a great community volunteer, worked at Community Gatepath, San Mateo County Medical Auxiliary, the AAUW, the Daughters of the American Revolution. Whenever there was a fundraiser for young people or people of need, she was one of the leads always in the Hillsborough, San Mateo, Burlingame area. And so she died on October 15th of this year, and I'd like us to adjourn in her memory.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom, Supervisor Pine, do you have a, Supervisor Slocum? Supervisor Tessier?
Yes. I would like to adjourn in memory of Bill Schumacher. He was a former Daly City Police Officer, former Daly City Mayor and Councilman, and also San Mateo County Supervisor. He passed away this past Sunday, November 3rd, at his current home in Palm Springs, minutes before leading, heading out the door to play his beloved game of golf. He leaves behind his wife Liz and his three children. All of us knew Bill. He was quite the character, extremely bright, and I just have to tell this one story, I absolutely love this story. He and I were walking into the U.S. Open, I forget which year it was, and he turns to me and he says, is that the merchandise tent for the U.S. Open? And I said, yes. He goes, I just want you to know that's in San Mateo County. I said, Bill, how would you know that? How would you know? He says, this is the demarcation line of San Mateo County and San Francisco County. So next day, he runs down, talks to John Malpe. John checks it out. Sure enough, we got, did we get close to a half a million dollars in sales tax or something?
It was almost a million dollars in sale tax, and then Mayor Brown never forgave Bill for that.
It was, it was one of the great stories for Bill. But anyway, he will be sorely missed in San Mateo County, and especially the North County. I know it's fairly new, but there will be a service in Daly City. We don't have that yet, and as soon as we do, I'll make sure our board gets its word.
Yeah. I just want to comment about Bill Schumacher. Actually, he was a, as Supervisor Tessier said, he's a Daly City Police Sergeant, and I was a brand-new patrolman when he was a sergeant. And he was a good one. He was a very good police officer. In any case, he left and became, he became an attorney. And I remember, I made an arrest, and the defense attorney was none other than my former sergeant. And I thought, oh, no, this guy's going to really rake me over the coals, because, you know, he knows all the ins and outs. And of course, it was a fairly minor case, and it was really an experience being cross-examined by somebody who used to be your sergeant. And of course, I knew him for, over the years, when he was on the Board of Supervisors. He, he had a great sense of humor and a real, he was just, he was a very, he was a very bright man and always had lots of ideas, I'll have to say. A lot of different ideas, great guy. Sorry to have lost him. The other thing I just wanted to comment as, last board meeting, we had allocation for Alpine Road, and we talked about doing some work on Alpine Road, and I'd actually like to bring that back to consider redirecting the funds. One of the things that came out in the public testimony was that, that one of the issues to dealing some of the traffic, rather than, we talked at the time about taking trucks off the road, which I think is going to be a difficult process, but, but it seemed like, you know, after listening to all the conversation and afterwards went, going back and talk to, talking to our traffic engineers, it looks like platooning traffic might be a better solution rather than moving the trucks. So I'd like to bring that back to consider redirecting and looking at, you know, signal. Again, I think it is, it's, I think it's a, an issue between not only us, but also the state and Menlo Park as well, and that, and Stanford. I should point out that Stanford has some responsibility. When they looked at all the construction they had for the hospital and the expansion of a lot of their other facilities, one of the items that was identified was the traffic signal at 280 in Alpine. But nothing ever occurred or happened after that. So in any case, I'd like to bring that back to the board. And any other comments from the board? With that, we will adjourn to closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one speaker, Marty Fox.
Good morning again, President Horsley, members of the board, my fellow veterans, Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpe, Mr. Holland and Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Defense Secretary Chuck Hagel told a meeting of financial services industry executives that each branch of the American military is being reduced to meet congressionally mandated budget reductions in New York last Friday. The Army, for example, is being reduced to 490,000 from an Iraq war high of 570,000 service members. Another 110,000 service members will have to be discharged from the Army if across-the-board spending cuts remain in place, and that would reduce it to the smallest number of active duty service members since before World War II. Relying exclusively on the Lannarment-Peaches-Short Act has produced tragedies that injure and kill others, like the ones that involve the veteran who killed 12 employees at the Navy Yard in Washington on September 16th, and the one that killed two police officers in Santa Cruz on February 26th. Untreated serious mental illness also severely injured John Jacob Burger's mother in the city of San Mateo on August 12th. There is no reason for veterans, or anyone else for that matter, to live with mental illness who does not understand their need to seek treatment voluntarily and expose their families or law enforcement that have to pay the tragic price of good intentions and wishful thinking. Loire's Law assisted outpatient treatment produces positive results, and evidence of the positive outcomes was examined by the U.S. Department of Justice before AOT was certified as an effective, economical and humane program that promotes recovery instead of relapse. Experiments like mental health first aid produce good feelings, but nothing close to the evidence that shows implementing Loire's Law is a reasonable, rational and economic way to produce positive outcomes for those who have served us. Thank you.
All right, we're online.
Okay, we're back into open session. Mr. Byers, can you report on the results of closed session?
Yes, Mr. President. The board met in closed session and took no action today. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now adjourn. Thank you very much.